Changes. Welcome, on behalf of the Executive Director of the Mississippi Department of Human Services, I would like to welcome each of you to the public hearing for the proposed changes to the Mississippi Childcare Payment Program Policy Manual. Once all public comment has been received and reviewed, the final policy document will be submitted with an effective date of November 1st, 2025. My name is Crystal Carter and I am with the MDHS Division of Early Childhood Care and Development. The purpose of this oral proceeding today is to allow the public an opportunity to provide comments on proposed changes to the Childcare Payment Program Policy Manual prior to finalizing any changes. If you would like to review the proposed policy change document, it is available at www.mdhss.gov. The procedure for today's oral proceeding is as follows. Speakers registered to speak prior to today's session. Registered speakers will be called to speak in order in which they registered. All meeting participants will remain muted until called to speak. Time cannot be transferred to another participant. Speakers will, when possible, identify the policy chapter or topic for which they are commenting to ensure that MDHS is able to align comments with draft language. Each speaker will be allowed to comment on the proposed policy changes for five minutes. A verbal notice will be given when you have one minute left to finish your comments. And another verbal notice will be given when your time to comment has expired. Once all registered speakers have commented, registered speakers will be given the opportunity to provide additional comments for two minutes, if there is enough time for all speakers to be afforded this extra time. Speakers will be called in order in which they register. Once all registered speakers have commented, their comment or time for the meeting will conclude. The comments provided today will be recorded which allows MDHS personnel involved in policymaking to review all of the speakers' comments. MDHS will not be responding to any comments or questions during today's oral proceeding, but will acknowledge all comments regarding the proposed changes to the Childcare Payment Program Policy Manual. The recording of today's session will be posted on the Division of Early Childhood Care and Development's website at www.mdhss.gov. I will now open the floor for comments related to the proposed changes to the Mississippi Childcare Payment Program Policy Manual with a tentative effective date of November 1st, 2025. Our first speaker is Delophus King. Our next speaker is Baschonda Washington. Alright, the next speaker is Consuela Stevenson.
Hi, everyone. This is a reminder, when Crystal calls your name, you can unmute yourself and she will give you your start time and you can begin speaking when she tells you that your time has started.
Next, we will have Alicia Carter. Okay, Kaseela Dixon. Ashley Gunn. Angel Dawson. Emery Cathy. Courtney Jackson. Marilyn Ford. Erica Thomas. Brianna Green. Annie Gray. Dr. Lily Stewart Robinson. Jacqueline Simpson. Sally Frederick.
I'm here.
Okay. Alright, you have been unmuted and you will now have five minutes to make your comments. I will give you a one-minute warning prior to the expiration of your time. Your time begins now.
Thank you so much. First of all, my name is Sally Frederick and I'm a policy analyst with the Mississippi Low-Income Childcare Initiative, also known as MLIC. MLIC would like to, first and foremost, applaud DHS for, and Chad in particular, for coordinating the CCPP Advisory Council and for keeping the review of this policy manual transparent and open to the public. We very much appreciate the opportunity to submit written and verbal comments at this time. I have a few main points that I'd like to highlight. These will also be included in our written comments that we'll be submitting today. The most pressing issue that we have heard from CCPP providers and low-working parents in Mississippi is that there is a very inadequate revenue for CCPP. The loss of certificates in 2025 has had a tremendous negative impact on providers, families, children, and communities alike. And it's just causing incredible turmoil. A few specific small things. We have on Chapter 3, under 3.2.1 Eligibility Guidelines by Priority Group, we would like to recommend that MDHS extend priority of service to CCPP subsidies to teen parents regardless of the work status of their parents with whom they may be residing. MDHS should ensure that childcare subsidy is immediately available to teen parents and should waive the work requirement that is currently imposed on the parents of the teen parents. We have assisted through our EESM program, teen mothers who have experienced the harm that this policy can cause when the parent or guardian who they reside with simply cannot comply with the worker education requirement. So we strongly recommend that you consider waiving the work requirement for teen parents and their family members. For victims of domestic violence, we recommend adding specific eligibility guidelines for victims of domestic violence to accompany our recommendation that domestic violence victims be a priority of service population. Victims should be extended a grace period for complying with the work requirement and providing some income or enrollment verification documentation. Victims who are fleeing often lack the stability they need to secure the employment and need access to childcare immediately so that they can take these steps. MLIC strongly urges MDHS to consider the plight of the domestic violence victims and implement a 90-day grace period at initial eligibility to comply with these requirements. Moving ahead to Rule 5.12 and 5.14 on eligibility period and redetermination of eligibility, we would like to recommend that CCPP providers also receive the 60-day and the 30-day notice of the redetermination to the parents they are serving. In Rule 5.43 Require Documentation, we have encountered through our EESM program many parents who are having difficulty just getting their initial pay stubs or a letter from an employer if it's a brand-new job on employment letterhead. So we would just strongly recommend that you consider creating an alternative option when employers or education and training administrators refuse to cooperate with submitting formal letters, verification of work, verification of education and/or training, information, and signed letters. Then, moving ahead on Section 7.2B5, CCPP provider requirements to participate in Elevate, which is also known as the QSS system, the Class Observation, we strongly recommend that you make participation in the QSS system voluntary and not mandatory for childcare providers. The 12% Quality Aside Set Aside does not require states to implement a QSS. Instead, the states can choose one of 10 listed quality improvement strategies and develop it on their own. So Mississippi should, in theory, take the 12%
One minute remaining.
Wonderful. Take the 12% Quality Set Aside and should only be used for quality activities that will bring additional revenue to the centers, especially considering the previous-mentioned CCPP pause and the waitlist that have accumulated. We would also recommend that you use quality improvement funds for strategies that will increase teacher wage enhancements and professional development, as well as where allowable to address unmet needs and specific needs regarding specific populations such as infant and toddler, children with disabilities, and non-traditional hours of care. And thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Alright, next, we will have Rihanna Johnson. Next, we will have Jamie Anna Cooper. Next, we will have Tracy Strong. Next, we will have Cantrell Key. Next, we will have Delores Sewell.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alright.
I'm Delores Sewell.
Okay. You have been unmuted and you will now have five minutes to make your comments. I will give you a one-minute warning prior to your expiration of your time. Your time begins now.
Okay. Rule 4.1 Submitted An Application Where Parents Must Select A Provider Prior To Fill In Out The Application. I have some concerns simply because parents will do this when they actually don't want that provider. And I think if they're going to choose a provider, they should be required within a certain amount of time to remain with that provider. The other thing, 5.9, special need document, I think there should be documentation to understand what an IEP NISFP means because a lot of parents don't realize that you, I mean, providers don't realize that you're talking about a certain age. And if they're so, you know, I think it should be that. The redetermination process says that if they are going to be looking for job search, that they have 90 days. I think when the person is notified, it should be added that if they are being, rather than just being terminated, that they have landed their job search. And if they do are looking for a job in unemployment, that they should be able to respond and say that because many parents don't understand that that rule is available. The Infant Death Syndrome, I'm sure it came from the Health Department, but very seriously, and I think parents, many parents, choose which way they want their babies to sleep. And I think you need to look at that because we get permission from the parents on that. Parents' choice of provider. And I have some concerns about the parents not respecting providers and the parents not providing because it indicates that if a parent, if you have a police report, that DHS may look into that. But I think if there's a police report, DHS to look at that a lot seriously because you don't know if someone got hurt. You don't know if somebody got killed. And that parent just goes on, you don't know if that parent is a fella. And this parent just goes on and on from center to center abusing people. And if you have something as serious as going to the police and it's submitted to DHS, they should go before, look further than saying they may look into it because that's a serious offense. And the other thing is, I do support Carol Burnett's, MLIC's, work requirements for teens and victims of violence because those are serious things that we really need to make sure that parents understand. And I would also say that I would like to see more stricter rules for parents, although you don't require them. But if there is a handbook for childcare providers, I feel there should be some kind of required written information for parents where they can have in their possession of the role and just it's the violence. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your comment. Next, we will have Barbara Chapman. Alright, next, we will have Carol Burnett.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. First, I just want to say that we are going to submit written comments and I want to just support all of the written comments that you're going to receive from the Mississippi Low-Income Childcare Initiative. I want to reiterate a few of the points that Sally Frederick, my colleague, has already introduced. First, I just want to support her recommendation that in light of the growing waiting list that we have in CCPP, that DHS use all allowable funds, including ten of direct funding, to increase the revenue so that we can, into CCPP, so that we can increase the number of children who can be served. We also recommend that DHS make participation in the Elevate Class System, the Quality Support System, voluntary instead of mandatory, especially until there is a devoted revenue stream to support that program. And a couple of other ones that I just want to highlight. I want to urge DHS to create a priority category of service for victims of domestic violence and to allow a grace period for them to comply with the work and education requirements at initial eligibility. In addition, I would like to urge DHS to waive the work requirement for parents of teen parents who are receiving CCPP assistance. And again, I just want to support the written input that we are going to be submitting, which cover many more points than I have lifted up in the verbal comments today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we will have Deb Ellis.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, okay. Alright, you have been unmuted and will now have five minutes to make your comments. I will give you a one-minute warning prior to the expiration of your time. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you so much. I must tell you that I've been in conversation with provider after provider after provider this morning. I had not planned to speak. I did sign up to speak this morning after being in conversation with Cantrell Keys, who will be submitting written comments. But there is some confusion about the kinship rule. In the definitions, the rule lists three degrees of kinship. But when you get to the eligibility of providers, the kinship rule is different, but it refers back to that kinship rule. I'm just so confused. I understand that parents and guardians who are raising these children cannot be compensated by the CCPP. And my understanding was at one time they were going to restrict grandparents, but I think we changed that in that wonderful work session that we had. By the way, thank you Chad and Angela for accommodating all of us to work on this draft. We changed that to allow grandparents to care for these children. So it only impacts parents and direct guardians who are living with these children in their homes and raising these children, that they are not to be compensated by the CCPP if they own and operate the facility. Now, parents who are working in the facility may allow their children to attend that facility as long as they're not in that parent's classroom. The parent, the childcare worker, cannot have direct supervision of their own child. And I'm going to tell you, I agree with that. Y'all know these children can terrorize a place if the rules are not being equally enforced. And it's my experience that a parent is either too strict with their own child or they're not strict at all with their own child. It just doesn't work. So I agree with that. The child may attend the same facility but may not be in the classroom with that child. But I need some specification on the kinship rule because it seems to contradict what we determined we would allow when we had our work session. And these are some comments that were shared with me this morning. I just want to get them into the minutes. I'm writing to respectfully address and request reconsideration for the kinship rule outlined under Section 31, Chapter 7, which restricts parents, guardians, or relatives who are childcare providers or owners from caring for their own children or relatives receiving assistance to the childcare payment program. While I understand the intent of this policy to prevent conflicts of interest, misuse of funds, etc., I believe the rule as currently written and enforced creates unnecessary hardship for childcare providers and families who rely on this support system to achieve stability and economic progress. The kinship restriction undermines the value of family-based care. Lastly, this policy may unintentionally contradict the broader goals of state and federal childcare initiatives aimed at increasing workforce participation and supporting early childhood education. Restricting qualified licensed providers from receiving assistance or serving relatives disincentivizes growth within the childcare industry and may ultimately reduce the number of available childcare slots for Mississippi families. Those are written comments that will be submitted by Cantrell, but she is not the only one with this concern. And I do agree, after speaking with her this morning, that the kinship rule as listed in the definitions seems to contradict what we determined we would allow in Section 7. So I'm asking that you look into that and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright, next, we will have Eldora John. Okay, so we will go back through the list one more time to make sure that everybody has the opportunity.
I'm new. I'm here. I'm here.
Okay. Alright, Ms. John. You have been unmuted and you will now have five minutes to make your comments. I will give you a one-minute warning prior to the expiration of your time. Your time begins now.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to thank you guys for giving us this chance to talk with you, concern the things that are going on and with CACP. I'd like to agree with Sally Frederick with all the things that she said, all of them. At this time, concerning childcare period, the redetermination factor has no support. I mean, the kids have no backup. So everybody that's going out, their certificates has gone out, they cannot reapply. That hurts the parents as well as the childcare provider, especially me being left with three kids out of 15. Our people can't, can't reapply.
I agree quickly.
So the, hello? So the people, my parents, a lot of them have moved away, which changed the lives of the children as well as the parent and the daycare. They moved away where they had people to keep their children. That is so unfair. That parents cannot reapply for childcare right now but get on a long list, which nobody knows how long that list is. Something should have been in place to keep those children in daycare and keeps surviving. Who knows where they are? That's one of the things that really get me. Anytime you take something out, you need something to put back. The parents cannot reapply at the time that their certificate has gone out. Even those that are on the system were not able to change tenant, even those that are on tenant, could not transfer or change their children. So I think something needs to be in place. If you're going to take something out, you need to put something back in. All of these children are gone. Most of the parents had like three kids. So when you take those kids out, they need some, at least have something give somebody else. Because these kids, if they didn't, the parents, if they didn't need the help, they would not have re, have not, they would not have applied for childcare. So when you take childcare away from the parents and tell them they have to get on the end of the list, how long is the list? So these people got to survive. So even leaving their jobs and go where they have family to keep their children, they've done that. Most of my people have. They've done it. Moved away to get help. And that's so unfair for those parents to have changed the lives of their children as well as the lives of everyone involved in that. So when you take something away, you should have something to put in place, but you took every dime, just took them out. So I think I'd like to suggest that if this is ever done, you have something in place to keep these children in a safe environment. And since I'm out here and providers are out here, you don't know the situation that these kids, a lot of them are in. They need a safe place during the day and even at night a lot more. So I'd like to suggest that this never happened to be. You take a parent's certificate with no way to get it back right there. And even there should be time if they're going to, their certificate is going to end, that the parents know. Send them a written notice. Your certificate is about to end.
One minute remaining.
Okay. Your certificate is about to end. You need to find something, do something, or let us know what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, at this time, we will go back through the list to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. Are we going to start at the top again with Delophus King? Alright, Baschonda Washington. Consuela Stevenson. Alicia Carter. Kaseela Dixon. Ashley Gunn. Angel Dawson. Emery Cathy. Emery Cathy. Courtney Jackson. Marilyn Ford. Erica Thomas. Brianna Green. Annie Gray. Dr. Lily Stewart Robinson.
I'm here.
Okay.
Uh my concern today is I want to draw upon the knives the importance of uh the roles of childcare providers and the impact it has on the social-emotional development of children. After being in childcare for over forty years, I realize how important it is for the children to be in a stable, loving, caring and Christian environment. And I believe in doing things decently and in order. And right now, there's confusion within the childcare arena for providers as well as the parents. And I just want you all just take a just take a look back and see what you all could do differently to make sure everyone is provided with the type of childcare service that their children need. It you all have come a long way. We all have. But to just back up so quickly with the accomplishments that has has taken place with all the various organizations that care about children. I really just want everybody just take a deep breath and try to come up with a solution that would get everything in control with concern with children having a safe place. A lot of the children are going through things in their family situation. And if it wasn't for quality childcare providers, they have a love in their heart for children, I don't know what the children would be. I want to say that and also I want to speak to the kinship rule. Without the kinship rule, all of my sisters, all of my siblings that came through my center over the years, their children would not have been in the position they are now. Some are nurses, some are doctors. What I'm saying is they the family shouldn't be uh put on the back burner. Cause if we provide quality childcare for our children, our family members should have access to it without having to go through. It's been a blessing. It's been a blessing to even have that contact with our nieces and nephews and grandchildren and yet providing the service that they need. So I I just want you all to just take a breath and just think back and how this would affect the children. No one know any better than about our children, our children and their emotional development or their social skill in each family. I think we all can agree that it's so important to keep family units together and they're still in the childcare arena, teach them and show them the right way. I I just want you all to just take a deep breath and just re reconsider all the things that has taken place this year. But imagine you're looking like you're going in the right direction. I was excited. I'm sure everyone else were excited because we were able to have resources. We have our facilities redone. We have uh resources for the children that we've always wanted. But to go back, we're going backwards. So I just want you all to just take a deep breath and sort of reconsider some of the rules that you all made. If you only could walk a mile in our shoes just for a week and you are really understand what we're coming what we're coming for. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we will have Jacqueline Simpson. Rihanna Johnson. Um Jemaine Cooper. Tracy Strong.
I'm here. Um thank you for having this forum for us to be able to express ourselves. This has just been a trying time in um childcare. You know, over the years, we poured our hearts and hard work and dedication into providing a loving and uh educational environment for children in Mississippi to walk through our doors. And to some, um you know, childcare is is just isn't a business to us. It's our passion. It's our purpose. You know, we wake up every day and um even coming through the doors of our facility, if our kids hear our voice, they'd be so excited to see us, you know. So it's like with we have given Mississippi so much by pouring it to the kids for them to just come and snatch everything up from under us with the new changes um with the six categories that that, you know, has been implemented since April first and which um a lot of the categories like military families, you know, already have childcare, you know, in place for those families, you know, as an instance. Like teen pregnancies, you know, like we're we're stats for Mississippi taking consideration like of how many teen parents are in Mississippi to even put that in place. Um you know, the childcare issues, we're facing difficult times. A lot of centers are closing. So we have to look at this, you know, as a whole, if we're closing and if no centers is in the area, how's our licensed officials gonna, you know, go anywhere, you know, um. I I just hope that you that can go back to the drawing board and put something better in place for, you know, everybody. Uh everybody that, you know, when you when when uh my whole thing of starting a daycare uh was like, oh, you know, who who am I gonna get, you know, where I can take my baby too, so I could uh trust. So I take that into consideration every day when parents come in here. Just how I feel and I was in your shoes, you know, I want you to be able to trust us. So you know, whoever is making decisions, I want them to take that into consideration. Their parents are trusting us with their babies, you know, where where they are able to go to work, you know, and to provide for their kids. And that's all. That's all I want to say. Thank you, guys.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment. All right. Next, we will have Cantrell Keys. All right. Next, we will have Barbara Chapman.
I'm here, but I haven't. I don't have anything to say right now.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. So that's it. We will go back through the list one more time um to see um if anyone that has already spoken would like to give additional comments for two minutes. So we will start there. Um just go back through the list. Um Delophus King.
Uh yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Uh a brief question and in light of, I know we are talking about the uh the manual, but in light of the fact, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you.
Yes, ma'am. In light of the fact that we have the government shutdown, how is this affecting uh new certificates for this fiscal fiscal year? And uh and then we're getting messages. That's first thing. That's the first thing. The other thing is we have been getting uh notices that there's a limited uh availability of funds. So how do those things, two things come together to affect people who are applying for certificates?
Dr. King, Dr. King, this is Chad. Um we, during public hearings, we do not give response to questions. Um if you will send your question to me via email, I'll be happy to respond to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, sir.
You're welcome.
Next, we will have um Baschonda Washington. Conscuela Stevenson. Alicia Carter. Kaseela Dixon. Ashley Gunn. Angel Dawson. Emery Cathy. Courtney Jackson. Marilyn Ford. Erica Thomas. Brianna Green. Annie Gray. Jacqueline Simpson. Rihanna Johnson.
Hey, CJ, just how you doing, brother? Oh, man, trying to make a voice, man.
Jamiana Cooper. And Cantrell Keys. All right. So since um we don't have anyone else to speak, we will go back through one more time for those who have already spoken to see if you would like um an additional two minutes to speak. And we will start with um Dr. Lily Stewart.
Yes, I want to really stress this uh confirmation that I have pertaining to uh statistics I'm working on as far as the effect that children that uh live at home, I mean, people that are six months, that are exposed to quality education on the preschool level as well as infancy and toddler. Their foundation is being built and how they go on to be productive. Children in elementary, middle school, high school, and most college. I want to stress this fact because it's so important. I'm not just talking about my program, but even on the last week after one last student's trip, uh graduated from here, went to the four-year-old program, which you know Jackson Pope School have most of them. That he scored fifty-eight percent of students nationally.
You have one minute remaining.
Okay, in the same grade, but what I'm saying, not child violence, the bad foundation or they provide the foundation for children as early as six months or whatever age. And they go on to the four-year-old program. They're getting the credit, but we did the foundation. And I just want to let you all know how important what we do is in childcare. And that when you all go back to the drawing board, that you all think about that. And I appreciate everything that you've done in the past, but we have to do more in this community and childcare. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next, we will have Sally Frederick. All right. Tracy Strong. Delores Sewell.
Yes, Delores Sewell here. Um comment about kinship. I would like to see you look into the definition of reasonable distance because in some areas, although this kinship rule may be applied uh under reasonable distance, there may be no centers within that definition that a parent can take their child to uh because the only center is uh their center. So that need to be looked at as to what would we do about something like that. The other thing I'd like to make sure that something is added about privacy. And I had a situation where someone from DHS called one of my staff. And it had to be that they got the information off the health department uh website or off my application because it calls her cell phone. And I would ask that a rule based on the Privacy Act be strictly enforced and added to the policies that uh DHS and everyone would adhere to their rule.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
Okay, not only that, I would like to know if any of these uh concerns will be addressed at any time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we will have Barbara Chapman. Ms. Carol Barnett.
Um the only thing I would add is just to reiterate the um all of the written input that we as the Mississippi Low Income Childcare Initiative are submitting. It's um more comprehensive than we have time to go into in oral comments, but I just want to underscore um my support for all of the written comments that we're providing to DHS on on the CCPP policy manual. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Ellis.
Thank you, Crystal. I failed to mention earlier that Cantrell Keys is not present today because she is with Matt at the conference on the state of the infant at uh Eagles Landing, I think near Hattiesburg. So she is busy working. And I wanted to make clear too that Cantrell's position is there should be no kinship policy. She she feels that parents should be able to provide care for their children. My understanding of what we decided that day, My understanding of what we decided that day uh when we met was. If a champ, uh owner or director has a child in their care, that's fine, as long as that child is not being paid through CCPP. They may not receive federal funding or state funding to care for their own children. Grandparents uh were allowed. Uh, caregivers, your employees. May bring their children as long as you don't assign, assign that employee to supervise that child. So um, my understanding is they felt this was necessary because.
About one minute remaining.
Okay, the state allows, you can only have five children in your home and, and they do not count children that are related to the third degree. DHS, that, that would include all of these relatives that wouldn't even be counted in your number of five children. To lawfully operate a childcare home or to provide care for children in your home. DHS walked into one apartment, a small apartment, and the caregiver was providing care and receiving payment for twenty children. Because they were all related to her. And so uh, they didn't count in her count of five. That's a problem. Uh, and the problem I had with uh caregiver's child is that um. She was my, my caregiver was uh my director designee and her child used to fire the teachers every afternoon on the playground. Uh, until I'd had enough and made his daddy come get him. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and last we have Eldora John.
Yes. For some reason I'm having problems unmuted. Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'd just like to add. Okay, I'd just like to add to uh, once you, a person or parent lose their certificate. You are having something in place. So those parents are not just left out there with their children. There's two people that left me, that was six children. Each parent had three. And Chicago is not a place to raise children, I don't think. I don't know where the other one moved to. But I think uh MDHS should have something in place. For these children to not, not just drop, but have some, something in place, something else they can do. Also, uh, a child that is on tenant or children that are on tenant. I think that those children should be able to transfer, the parents should be able to transfer.
Now, one minute remaining.
Okay, the parents should be able to transfer those children at any time, regardless of where they are in their certificate. Number one, tenant money is different. So it has nothing to do with you are saying you're short of funds. These are tenant funds. So parents should transfer their uh children at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. As there are no more registered speakers remaining to submit comment. The oral proceeding for proposed changes to the Mississippi Childcare Payment Program Policy Manual is officially closed. We thank you for participating and.